All right, I see in the corner, we're streaming, is that correct?
We are live.
All right, thank you. After a brief recess, we've already taken the role of the committee of the whole, and we remained on the, so I won't take a role because we were simply in a brief recess to get the administration on. We have with us Commissioner Donna Estridge, and we will be going a little bit out of order. The school board's presentation was much shorter than usual, which it almost usually takes an hour. It took five minutes because, again, for the record, their budget is not complete. So that the public knows, it is very difficult when we are in these talks, and it is of no fault, their budget is due later, but it is very difficult for this council then to be able to consider maybe some of those requests that may come from the public for the school system, because we have no idea the direction right now that the school system's budget is going in, and it seems as if that budget will be available after these. So Commissioner, did you want to start with? Where'd you want to start? Administration and Finance?
Sure, I think Jessica Brown is on also. So, you know, if you have any questions for us, we'd be glad to answer them.
All right, these are the workshops, Councilmen. Any questions for Administration and Finance? All right, and I know a lot of questions were asked during the budget hearings. So if you don't hear Councilmembers, that was their questions that been answered. I don't see any hands up.
Yeah, and we're available.
All right.
You know, we're certainly available all day or any future date too.
We'll take you up. Sounds like you're either crunching paper. So we will, if there's no questions for Administration and Finance, thank you Commissioner Estridge, will you be on?
Yes, I will.
Okay.
Yes, Jessica and Director Brown and myself will both be on all day.
All right, and police is on their way over? Is that correct?
Yes.
Council President, we have fire here if you want to take fire.
Yes, absolutely. Let's, let's start with fire. So we have finished Administration and Finance, and we will go to fire. They are coming in the room. Good morning, sir, thank you for being here.
Good morning, Council President, good morning, everyone.
Just looking for some notes here. Commissioner, obviously, I'm sure, you know, we met with the fire union, and one of the things that came up was about the New York State Training Academy and versus the training happening in-house. Can you talk to us a little bit about the financial portion of that?
Yes, of course. I think I touched on it in our earlier meeting last week. We were talking about the difference between roughly $150,000 dollars to train at the New York State Training Academy versus $700,000 plus training at the academy in Chico longer, where we have to take our instructors down the field, backfill them, and there's a significant amount of overtime involved in that model. So we decided to go with the, you know, just looking at this as a pilot program pretty much. So we have 15 recruits out there right now, they're scheduled to graduate in June. I think I heard that Mr. Vintus was a little concerned about, you know, the strenuousness of the training out there as far as, but we're always putting the recruits under physical and mental stress, all right? That's the way it should be in training, because obviously, we want to know if there's any issues while they're in training versus after they graduate and they're out in the field and, you know, their own safety, your firefighter safety and the public safety is at stake. So yes, they're working hard out there. The state has a very good program, myself and my deputies have been out there to look at the program several times while our recruits are in training. And actually, the New York State instructors or the New York State Fire Academy are the ones that operate under the umbrella, well, our training academy operates on the umbrella of the New York State Fire Academy. So basically, our instructors are trained by New York State Fire Academy instructors. So they're getting the very best training available in New York State. I mean, it is the New York State Training Academy, there's no better place to be. And many of our major municipalities take advantage of that fact, you know, Syracuse, Rochester, some of our bigger municipalities, as well as smaller municipalities throughout the state as well.
He also brought up about that we could, his feeling was we could save money through promotions and hiring. Where are we at on the promotions and hiring?
On the hiring, we'll be slightly overstaffed when this class of 15 graduates is exactly where we want to be. Just to touch on that a little further, it's our plan, I think it's a good plan. We need to go on that route, I mean, the pandemic is a perfect example of that. Not only physically, but operationally as well. Two years ago, just myself and my command team came in, came into office, this department was anywhere from 100 to 150 short. That would have occurred during the height of the pandemic, and we're 100, 150 short staffed, we would not have been able to operate a fully functional fire department. We would have had to cut services, but because we dug in and we decided to go full bore and fully staff this department, we were able to operate with no depth of services to the community. And if that had not occurred, if we're not fully staffed or close to fully staffed during the height of that pandemic, we would have had to close firehouses, consolidate services, and not only would it affect the firefighter safety, but the safety of the public as well. So from an operational standpoint and a fiscal standpoint, it's very important to keep this department fully staffed as possible. So when those 15 graduate in June, we'll be, like I said, slightly overstaffed for the first time in many, many years in this department.
Thank you, sir. We asked for the fuel and have it, because as we advance this talk about electric vehicles, I see the amount of fuel, and I hope I'm reading this right, I don't know if you have this in front of you, that we utilize a total of 177,758 gallons of gas in approximately a year, yeah, in a year's time. What's the amount we're paying per gallon?
I don't have that at my fingertips, Council President, but I can get that to you, unless you have it, do you have it, Jessica? Okay, I'll have to get back to you on that, Council President, but I can tell you, we've done a lot of research on electric vehicles, both for our chief rigs. We think that the best entry into the electric vehicle field is to start with our SUVs, our chief rigs, but we've also looked at the fire apparatus themselves. And there's one group out there, it's called the Rosenbauer Group, they've been out there for quite a while, they've been manufacturing electric vehicles and our standard model vehicles, diesel powered vehicles, you know, for many years and worldwide, actually. So, and Los Angeles Fire Department and a couple of other fire departments have purchased the vehicle as models, as a pilot program. So the pros are, some of the pros, just very quickly, are zero emissions, obviously, cuts down on the carcinogens, it's something that we're attempting to do across the board, narrower dimensions, smaller turning radiuses, that kind of thing, much more maneuverable, reduce noise level, a lot of our firefighters are coming down with hearing loss, things like that, so it's going to reduce that, all-wheel drive. And the fuel costs across the board, it looks like a standard fuel savings would be 49,000 gallons of fuel per year to be saved by going with a electric apparatus, fire apparatus, versus our standard diesel models, along with 106 gallons of engine oil. So those are the savings that, for instance, the Los Angeles Fire Department is experiencing with their model.
There's many other savings, I won't take up this time here, but including engine and filters and it just, it keeps going. So when people say, well, it costs more in the front, but as you go down the line, it's a lot less, because you don't have all of those things that you have to change.
You're 100% correct, Council President, yeah. I didn't get down into the new degree as far as the maintenance and that, but you're 100% correct on that.
So there's several of us who are working on resolution for that. So I just know in the future, we'd like to see, many would like to see some type of pilot where we start to move that way. Councilmembers, any Councilmember to come back?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have been in contact with Commissioner Ronaldo, and I think I've mentioned, I know I've mentioned it a few times to this honorable body, but we do not have backup generators at all of our firehouses in the city of Buffalo. And that was one of the concerns that I have is that, you know, God forbid, if there was ever some sort of an emergency and, you know, the city was struck in a, you know, electrical outage or something like that, I would like to make sure that all of our firehouses have those backup generators. I don't know if that would be something that we'd be able to put into this year's budget or if it's something that we could look at our stimulus dollars for, but I do think that it's a public safety issue. It is firehouses throughout the entire city of Buffalo, so it impacts every single one of our districts. So I would hope that we would put that high on our agenda of things that need to be done in the near future, whether it's like, as I mentioned, whether it's this budget or whether it's the stimulus dollars that are coming in. Commissioner Ronaldo, I don't know if you could maybe give us a little update on how many, you know, the firehouses that do have the backup generators and how many do not? And, you know, I, once again, I appreciate that whenever I've spoken with the Commissioner, he's been very helpful and very supportive of this issue, but of course, we have to try to help find the dollars to be able to take care of this, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Councilman, I can comment on that, yes. We have 19 firehouses, currently 20 if you include Engine 10 over on Gansville Street, and 10 of those, roughly 50% of our firehouses are without emergency generators. So we've done some research, we've gotten some quotes, and it's looking at anywhere from 100,000 to 125,000 per firehouse. So we're on the low end, to get our 10 firehouses up to speed with emergency generators, we're looking at roughly a million dollars.
So I see, Councilmember Gullumbeck, did you have a follow-up question?
No, just wanted to say thank you, that was my understanding, I didn't know if it had changed since the last time that I had spoken with the Commissioner, but I do think that that is a very, very wise investment for the entire city of Buffalo. If it came out to one to one and a half million dollars to be able to update our firehouses with generators, so I would just hope that my colleagues would be supportive of trying to put something into either this budget or the stimulus package, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, is that something that would be something out of our capital budget, since it's a, it would last more than 10 years?
I believe it would, but I would have to run it up through the Controller's office to make sure that Council President, but it would be something that we could, we could look at a grant, we could look at it through a capital budget, or hopefully from the stimulus might, like you said, I guess there's three elements.
Thank you.
Definitely a wide investment, given our weather events and everything else that we've experienced over the last couple of years.
Absolutely. Thank you. Councilmember Scam?
Yeah, just a quick, thank you, Council President, just a quick follow-up question. Commissioner, you mentioned that the Los Angeles Fire Department has purchased the electric vehicles on a pilot program. Do you know what those cost? Obviously, we're, that's not something for this year's budget, but it's something I put on everyone's radar.
Yes, thank you, Councilman. Actually, I mentioned the cons, I didn't mention, or the pros rather, I didn't mention any cons, and the biggest con is the price. Roughly, the model that the Los Angeles Fire Department took delivery of, it's roughly double the price, it's 1.2 million, it's a combination rescue vehicle and a pumper. A regular standard pumper runs us a little over half a million dollars. So it's basically double the price, but as the Council President brought up, you know, pilot program, we can recoup a lot of those costs over the years.
Yeah, absolutely, it's something down the line, we can weigh the pros and cons, as you say, and offset the cost short-term upfront versus long-term on the back end, it's conversation to be had, but thank you.
Commissioner Estridge, and then I'll come right to you, Councilmember Wyatt, the apparatus, is that usually out of capital, or I know that, or out of, which budget do we do vehicles?
The apparatus, ladders, and the engines are all out of capital bond money.
So I think it's good to just kind of throw that out here now, because you're hearing this from many councilmembers, probably, I would assume a majority who are interested, so that as we go into capital, I think that you're seeing a desire, and I think that's going to be a desire for all departments, to not come back with, and this is our first conversation about it, but just conversation about it, but possibly a vehicle per department, so that we start to move that way, because you still have to build the infrastructure for it, the charging of the vehicles and all that kind of stuff. So we ask that you really take a deep dive in it, so it's not a surprise and capital that this council, if we're talking saving the environment, will be actually trying to help save the environment.
Yes, thank, we have started looking into electric vehicles, so, but like you say, the infrastructure has to be there also.
Perfect, thank you.
Right.
I saw you, Councilmember Wyatt?
Actually, I'm sorry, Council President, if I may speak back real quick on Commissioner Estridge's comments, we also go to grant route, we have a outstanding grant, we're waiting for the, that we may have an answer on this early as August, according to our grant writers, and we did request an area letter at 1.3 million, so that's another avenue we use as far as purchasing the equipment, capital budget and grant money.
Beautiful, beautiful. Councilmember Wyatt?
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioner, just wanted to follow back up on the conversation you had previously about the overtime. Earlier, I think you said that you, you had your complement of firefighters and that you were pretty much at full strength?
That's correct, Councilman, we'll be slightly over full strength when this class of 15 recruits graduates in June.
Okay, do the battalion chiefs and the lieutenants, do they get overtime?
Oh, yes, they do, of course. Yes, anytime, if I could just, you know, go through the vacancies and, you know, just real quickly, you know, how vacancies are filled and how they're created, that kind of thing. Well, we had the standard, first of all, the standard people, these are what people are off on in our department anyway, vacation, comp time is called personal days or A-days, we call them, they can be off on bereavement, they can be off on city business, sick, of course, they can be out sick, they could be injured on duty, you know, we have a number of members on a short-term IOD, which is injured on duty, you know, they're not baking cookies out there, it's a dirty, dangerous job, people get dinged up, sprained ankles, they step on nails, they slip on ice, you know, all sorts of things. So whenever something like that happens, whatever the rank may be, it could be firefighter all the way through to division chief, actually, we had division chief out for a while with a back problem, so, and yet, those positions have to be backfilled. But in addition to that, you know, it's a professional department, and we have to have professional development, so we run classes like the First Line Leader Course, which is a continuous program designed to develop effective levels of knowledge and experience for people who are on our lieutenant's list or are about to become an officer, we call it flip school, and that's usually a four-week course, and we usually run that at least one time a year, so we have that. We have hazmat training, we have EMS certification and recertification, fire investigation unit generates some overtime, not some, but, you know, a decent amount of overtime, the Training Bureau, we have federal state mandated training, citywide training, and some of that training cannot be done on duty, sometimes done after hours, sometimes done on weekends, we have four platoons, so in order to capture all four platoons, 100% of the department, so there's some overtime involved in there as well, special operations. Every time we have a weather event, things of that nature, windstorm, ice storm, you know, we have to call more people in, we have reserve apparatus that we have to bring into the city, you know, for weather events, both weather events, social unrest, which we've experienced over the last year, year and a half, things like that. So there's other overtime generated other than the standard overtime created by vacation and PLs and things like that.
I mean, I know you had mentioned about the admin time that folks have off, and I guess I'm just concerned, I mean, we were 3.2 million over what we budgeted last year, and you said you're full staffed, fully staffed, so, you know, it's disconcerting to me that, you know, it just seems like this is something that's almost unmanageable, because we were told that the new contract with the overtime and how we did the workflow, that that was going to fix it, and that wasn't going to have the overtime, but now we're at, you know, $6 million today, and we're looking to budget 3.8 million for next year, and from what you're saying, there's so many trainings and other things that, you know, the firefighters are going through, you know, is that a realistic number, 3.8 million?
Yes, Councilman, if I may comment on that. So 3.8 million, even the 4.8 million that we were budgeted for the previous year, and in my estimation is too low, so it's almost like a self-provoked prophecy, that we're budgeted for X amount of overtime, and then we have all these things occur, some mitigating circumstances, plus all the things that I told you the department has to do, other than just backfilling people for just the regular things that they're off on, that kind of thing. The administrative leave was an aberration due to the pandemic, obviously, it was a good thing, I mean, it cost us a lot of money as a department and a budget, and for the city, as well as all the other departments. Well, it was a good thing from an operational standpoint, because it let our firefighters take time off to take care of their families, at least in the initial days of the pandemic, when people had to care for their families, for their children who were at home, because all the schools were closed, things like that, for elderly parents and any other issues they had, and yet, we were able to remain fully staffed with no reduction in services. Family leave was good, it was good for the department, it was good for the city, I'm sure it was good for all the other departments as well, but obviously, we took it thing fiscally, as I said, it cost us, you know, just under $2 million.
I'm hopeful that going into the new year, we have some plan. Do you sign off on all overtime? Who signs off on overtime?
Ultimately, the division chiefs sign for all the line overtime, all the firefighters that are on the line, and I signed personally for all our outline departments, like fire prevention, Training Bureau, because I put some strict controls in place as far as the overtime there, and unless it says authorized by the Commissioner of Fire on the overtime slip, it doesn't get paid.
Yeah.
Those are one of the controls we put in place.
I mean, it's doubly disconcerting to me, because your work numbers seem to be down from the fires and those things, so to have 3.2 million in additional overtime and your work numbers aren't to the extent that you've had major fires or more fires, you know, it's almost like, you know, we're setting ourselves up for a perfect storm where those things come to play, and so that number go from 6 million to 9 million? You know, those are things that, you know, I know you don't have any control over, but as far as the overtime numbers and how you do overtime, those are things that we have control over, but the other things, we may not. So I'm just hopeful that we can put something in place, because like I said, policing fire overtime is a huge issue for the city, and I know in some cases, that's what we have to do, we're not telling police or firefighters to go home when you're in a major fire because you got overtime, that's not something we're going to say, nor are we going to tell police to go home because they're investigating a murder, we're not doing that, but the things that we can control, we have to control, and I'm always on this overtime issue, because again, I think that we made a bad deal when we went through the four days and 25, 24 hours, that it just didn't make any sense, but we're here now, and so hopefully, it's something that you can put in place or you can give us more information, and hopefully, Administration will update us on overtime, because that's the number in play that puts us, you know, affects our budget and being able to do other things for the city.
I understand, I understand the concerns, Councilman, and we do have a number of controls in place right now, and digital controls that we're planning for the future, some of it has to be negotiated with the unit, and while our fire calls are down, I agree with you, nationwide fire calls are down, because all the things that's been going on in the fire prevention world, smoke detectors, things like that. However, our EMS calls, which make up, believe it or not, three quarters of our calls, volume of our calls are EMS calls, so that, those haven't gone away, and they're still, and they're still rising as we speak, but, and of course, you have all your hazmat incidents and every other incident that we go through, weather events, like I just mentioned, and things of that nature. So while fire calls are down across the board, we still respond to a number of other calls.
Well, thank you again, Commissioner, appreciate you.
You're very welcome, thank you.
Any other councilmembers? Councilmember Bear?
Thank you. Commissioner, you mentioned that the budget for overtime is too low, artificially low. Do we have an idea to get our mind, you know, wrapped around exactly how much should be budgeted for overtime?
Yes, and that's a great question, Councilman. Yeah. Everything being same, level across the board, without a number of, or taking into account a number of weather-related incidents and other incidents, anything else that could possibly happen untoward during the year, with a fully staffed department, in my estimation, our overtime budget should be anywhere from 6 to 6.5 million. And that would include all the other, all the other activities that I mentioned, Training Bureau, fire prevention, fire investigation, special events, we support all the special events in the city, things of that nature. So other than just frontline firefighting and, you know, filling vacancies that are created on the line, we have all these other activities that we have to support. As well as pandemics and weather events, like I mentioned, things of that nature.
Okay, 6.5 million. And then going back to the union, Mr., the union president mentioned, and I think the Council President brought it up earlier, and I don't know if you answered it, is promotional exams? How many vacant positions are there when it comes to those, those leadership positions?
I actually had a good, a meeting and a conversation with the Commissioner Estridge and Kevin Helfer maybe two weeks ago, and our current vacancies are five lieutenants and three captains, that's the number we're operating under, and I know Donna was, you know, really busy, obviously, these last couple of weeks, and as soon as these workshops go over, we're going to get together again, and we're going to submit the personnel request, and we're going to get those promotions going.
There's, there's a list that you can promote off, or you're looking at a new list?
No, there's a promotional list.
Okay, so if you have a promotional list that you can backfill these positions, why does it take so long to fill those positions?
It actually doesn't take very long, Councilman, I mean, contractually, we're supposed to fill these vacancies within 60 days, and that's what we have been doing. So as soon as someone retires or a vacancy is created some other way, we put the personnel request in, and it goes through all the codes, human resources, goes to Commissioner Estridge, and we fill those positions within the 60 days, which we're obligated to contractually.
Okay, so you use up the entire 60 days to backfill those promotional positions?
You know, I would love to get them done prior 60 days, they don't always take the full 60 days, but contractually, we're obligated to do it within 60 days.
Right, you're saying contractually, but I'm looking at it from a standpoint of supervision and having people there to do the work that they took the exams to do. I don't know if there's a way to get around, and not get around the 60 days, but I don't know how far in advance you know that there will be a vacant position because of retirement, you probably have a little bit of a heads up if people are retiring, and those, the people that are retiring are people that hold supervisory positions, so I'm just wondering if, if that can be a priority in backfilling those promotional positions?
Oh, yes, and Councilman, those are all great questions, and a lot of times, we do have a little bit of lead time, a lot of times, people put in for retirement, and unfortunately, they pull their papers at the last minute, or maybe they get injured, things of that nature, and we cannot put.
That's in those two things that you have mentioned, them pulling their papers or any other reasons, absent those reasons, perhaps we should consider trying to move those promotional positions, because obviously, the union is going to come to us as councilmembers, and they're going to complain those positions are not being backfilled, even though it's contractual, I understand it, but it seems to me that you have some discretion there in terms of, you have 60 days, you can use up 60 days, or you can do it, you know, in 10 days, I don't know.
I don't know if I was clear enough, I don't know if I was clear enough, Councilman. As soon as the vacancy is created, I submit a personnel request, from there, it's pretty much out of my hands, because it goes to HR, then it goes to Commissioner Estridge, and I have to wait for those two entities to go back to me to approve the promotion. And if I could snap my fingers, as soon as the vacancy is created, as somebody in the field for supervision and safety, I would do it in.
You can ask HR to follow up on this, to make sure that those positions are moved quickly through the process. We can work with HR and your department to try to streamline that, to get those officers in the positions that they took the exam to hold, so we can check with HR when we meet with them as well, to see how long it takes them to move that along and what other steps are needed to backfill those positions.
Well, that's great, and just as a caveat, you know, Commissioner Hernan and Commissioner Estridge are great to work with, they move them along as fast as they can, a little bit of delay is, you know, can be attributed. A little bit of delay is, is, you know, can be attributed to people working remotely and things like that. But, uh, have a great relationship with them and they move them along as quickly as they can.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other council members? Council member Wyatt? Yeah, la- last question, Commissioner. I know that, um, how, when there's a fire, there's supposed to be an investigation to determine what the, what the issue was with that, to cause the fire, right?
Yes.
What, what's the timetable on doing that? Cause I have a resident that there was a fire in a district and I guess she's waiting for something from your department on, I guess, what, what caused the fire for the insurance company?
Uh, yes, councilman, and it varies. That time varies, uh, depending on now, you know, was, was there, were there injuries, were there deaths? Uh, we have to wait for lab reports, coroner's reports, things like that to come back. But if, if there is a specific case, uh, if you can, uh, get that to me offline, I'll get together with the commander of our FIU and I can get you an update.
Okay, because, so you're, are you backlog on those things or that's just, like you said, depends on the situation?
No, there, there's no backlog as far as map hard wise, anything like that. It's just, uh, in some cases there's, there's legal issues. Like I said, we're waiting for coroner's report, we're looking for lab results, things of that nature.
La- last question, is everything up to date as far as, um, for investigators regarding, um, shower situation in, in the main facility?
Uh, I'm aware that they have requested an additional shower and we do have a request in with buildings. Uh, uh, I can give you updates once again offline of that as far as where we are. But, uh, yeah, we have, uh, looked into that and we are looking to get them at that facility.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Any other council members? All right. Thank you, Commissioner. We really appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Um, Commissioner Estrich, you know who's coming up next?
Council president, we have, uh, police.
Police? Oh, great. All right, we're bringing in police to the call.
Council president?
Yes, sir.
Uh, before I leave, we just got, uh, uh, Jessica just told me a dollar fifty-two a gallon on the, on the fuel. So thank you.
How much is that? A dollar fifty?
Dollar fifty-two.
A dollar fifty-two? Well, we all need to go get gas there.
That's diesel though.
Uh, but some of your vehicles use unleaded, right?
Yes, yeah, our, our T3s are all, uh, gas, yes, regular gas.
All right, if you could just get me the unleaded part two, I appreciate it. All right, thank you, Commissioner.
You're welcome.
All right, we are bringing in fire. I'm sorry, police.
That if you needed cost of the tasers, um, it's roughly two hundred and eight thousand. Budgeted for the first two years, two hundred and eight thousand, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, budgeted for year one and two. And then, um, the seven-year span total amount would be nine hundred forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Um, that includes the price of the cartridges, the training and replacement.
Okay. Thank you, deputy commissioner. Anything else that you are, we're bringing over? Is that it?
We had the, um, when council fellow was asking for the, um, cost of the, um, the health coverage, uh, I think Donna was going to get that.
Um. Um, the, the legacy cost for police officers. So the only thing that we really found was healthcare costs, which are currently seventeen thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars a retiree. And there's nine hundred and fifty-one retirees right now, bringing the total cost in this year's budget seventeen million dollars.
What was the number of retirees again?
Nine hundred and fifty-one.
Anything else?
No.
No, that's all we had, um, to bring back.
All right, thank you. Council member Rivera?
Uh, Commissioner or whoever can answer, has the legacy cost gone up this year?
Hi, this is Commissioner Estrich. Um, the only reason it would go up is the more employees who are retired. The cost itself has been fairly flat.
Right, because I think people are confused, um, when we talk about the budget and the legacy costs because they, um, there are fixed costs such as legacy costs and when those go up, they think that we purposely are increasing the police budget. When in fact, it's the legacy costs that are going up because we have decreased the police budget, um, at least last year. And including this year, we decreased the police budget. Uh, but sometimes the legacy costs go up and, uh, when they read the budget books, they're assuming that we have increased the police budget by, uh, last year we were accused of increasing the police budget by twenty million dollars, which was not correct. Was, they were misrepresenting, um, what was actually happening and we had to correct them. Although many, many people are still under that impression that, that we've increased the budget to the Buffalo Police Department. When in fact, a lot of those are contractual, they're legacy costs, they're fixed costs. And those are the drivers that have increased that budget. Uh, so the people that are watching us that are always attuned to the police budget, especially the police budget, uh, understand the legacy cost and the contractual cost. Uh, and sometimes those are drivers that increase the budget itself. So I just want to clear that up with the general public that are watching us and wanting us to question the legacy cost and, uh, fixed cost as well.
Was there a question that you needed answered?
Well, I just, I, I, the question I asked was the legacy cost, whether or not it went up or not.
And it did due to the increase in the number of retirees.
How much did the legacy costs go up?
Um, I'd have to get the prior year numbers for you. I, I only got the current.
Thank you. Very good point, uh, council member Rivera. Anyone else? Council member Scanlon?
Thank you, council president. Commissioner, deputy commissioners, thank you for being here today. Just a quick question. I know, um, during the course of the past year, we eliminated the traffic unit. Um, I'm noticing a lot of speeding. My office is getting a lot of calls, a lot of emails about speeding through neighborhoods. Is, is that something we are going to address, um, through implementation of the unit again, or how else can we address that?
Uh, council member Scanlon, so with the elimination of our traffic unit, we delegated those traffic concerns to our districts. Every district is, uh, responsible for having a, a, a traffic car. Uh, they are responsible for dealing with any and all traffic complaints, whether whatever they observe, three-one-ones, uh, or anything that comes in by any other complaint. Uh, they are doing, um, in some regards, I think, uh, some more traffic work because our traffic division was, uh, multi-purpose. They were doing a lot of special event work that took them away from doing the individualized traffic work. And when there was no, uh, traffic division members working, there was no man- mandatory minimum overtime for that. Uh, so we have the ability now to do traffic work within each of the five districts as opposed to having, you know, who was, whoever was on that platoon cover the entire city. So they are doing traffic work. Uh, every district has radar units. As a matter of fact, we just sent all the radar units to Albany, got them all calibrated, reinstalled back in the cars. We are also getting, uh, uh, more license plate readers. In a couple of weeks, it will be installed and evenly dispersed throughout the district. So we're putting a heavy info, um, a heavy enhancement on traffic within each of the individualized districts. Each district chief knows their, uh, district better and knows where those complaints are than leaving it to, you know, three to nine traffic officers that might have been working on a particular shift. So they're being dealt with individualized.
And when you mentioned that one car is dedicated per district, is it specific officers who would then be handling that? Are they trained specifically to handles, um, traffic stops, um, pulling over semi-trucks that might be on, uh, the wrong routes, things of that nature?
Well, the training on traffic enforcement comes in the academy and, and throughout their, their job specs. Radar officers are, uh, trained, uh, that comes after the fact. At one point, the academy, uh, did radar training and then they stopped that. Uh, I don't know if they're bringing that back or not. However, uh, we are sending a member of our academy staff to the academy to become a radar instructor, instructor. They have not offered that class to my knowledge in three years. That will allow us the ability to train our own officers in radar. It's a, a four-day class and the, uh, the constraints that we had on tr- uh, training more officers in radar is that they had to be working all four of those shifts because of overtime. It's very difficult to get our officers radar certified. So now, uh, having the ability to have our own academy member, staff member trained, we can run our own in-house, uh, radar certifications. We would ideally look to buy more radar units to handle that, uh, uh, you know, increased amount of traffic complaints. So we're really looking to drive this traffic enforcement thing, uh, home to each of the individualized districts to handle within their own, uh, with their own shop, if you will.
Um, as I mentioned, I know my, my office is constantly contacted about speeding. It really does feel when I'm out and around that people are speeding. Have we seen an increase in accidents?
Uh, I don't have, I don't have the accident numbers. I'd have to pull those and get back to you and I, and I can do that, uh, you know, rather quickly. I'll, I'll get that and I'll do a, a study on that, uh, information.
Okay, thank you.
And we do have, you mentioned tractor, trailer, semis. Uh, we have a couple of officers that are dedicated, uh, truck squad. That takes, um, additional enhanced training. Um, those officers handle the tractor, trailer complaints. Three-one-ones will get routed to them. Um, you know, additionally, if there are any accidents involving a tractor, trailer, they are authorized to be called in and to handle that investigation because it's, it's much more comprehensive when you're dealing with tractor, trailers.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Council member Bowley?
Uh, thank you, council president. Thank you, Commissioner, deputy commissioner for being here today. Um, just wanted to ask, I too, as council member Scanlon said, have issues with speeding. It seems like there's increased, uh, calls about speeding on our residential streets and all across the district. Uh, but my question is more specific to the, um, police building on Bailey Avenue at Moreland in my district where, when the traffic unit was disbanded or, uh, separated, they, um, that building, um, they, they left the building. So I know that there were different, uh, units kind of scattered throughout, but what is the plan with that building moving forward? Um, I know the district and, and my residents would like to still see officers in that building. I've heard, um, a lot of calls with regard to that. Uh, but what's, uh, what's the plan for that building moving forward, uh, continuing this year?
So right now our K-nine division is still in that building and we are looking, uh, at how we can utilize that building to get, uh, you know, other units in and out of there. Um, we're, we're still looking at, um, how we can utilize that building, but our K-nine is still housed in that, uh, building. They do have their, um, their training facility on Louisiana, but that is still their, their main stop. Um, we also have our net team, um, that is, uh, housed over there. And, and like I said, we're, we're looking at what, you know, how else we can better utilize that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, anything I could do to be helpful in that regard, just, uh, please stay in contact. Cause I've heard, um, not being clear from the residents that they would still like to have, uh, officers in a presence in that building. So, thank you.
Yeah, the, um, K-nine unit is usually there during the morning and, um, net team comes in at afternoon. So they'll be there from like three to one o'clock and, one o'clock in the morning. So it'd be a present there up until at least, um, two o'clock in the morning.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Council member Rivera?
Commissioner, can you give us a breakdown on, uh, statistics per district, uh, is, uh, the responsibly for ticketing or, uh, has gone to the patrol division? Can we get a breakdown of how many tickets are actually issued for speeding in each district? Uh, because we do have complaints of people speeding, like, uh, council member, particularly I mentioned, in our districts. And I really don't have any stats. You probably have them, but we don't have them. Uh, just a breakdown of how many speeding tickets are issued by the patrol division in each district?
So I, I don't have that on hand right now. I can get that to you after the meeting. What, uh, what timeframe are you looking for? I can pull them. Do you want just this year? You want a comparison to the last couple of years or what is the usual?
If you want to do a comparison between this year and last year, that'd be fine.
So the, I'll just caution you, the issue with last year with the pandemic, a lot of the traffic enforcement, uh, stopped particularly in the, in the very beginning of the pandemic. Our, you know, fear and our concern was having that interaction at the window. You know, when we really didn't know a lot about how this virus transmitted. So, um, you know, nationwide, not just here in Buffalo, we really backed off. Plus you also had a significant, uh, drop-off in the amount of cars on the road. So I'll get you the last several years, but if you're going to look at 2020, the stats are skewed across the board in many different ways because of pandemic.
That'll be fine.
Okay.
Um, Commissioner or anyone, uh, when we look at training, and I know that, that has been a big subject. Um, I, I think it, the training budget, is that in HR this year? Cause we're trying to figure out, are we increasing training? Um, have we increased the dollars for training for officers?
Hi, president, council president, the training budget, there was about a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, I believe that was allocated to HR for specific trainings. I think that was going to be the implicit bias.
And lead.
And lead. Those two items were transferred from police over to HR for training. And then the Buffalo Police Department still has its training budget as well for the departmental mandatory trainings that we do on an annual basis.
So the hundred thousand, so the regular training dollars will, will come to you. Are the hundred thousand is for HR to train, uh, on the bias?
And lead.
And lead. So how many, and, and I know this might, I should have asked this question because I don't want to put you on the spot. Uh, but you can get this back to us if you don't know in, uh, And anything you all send, I would appreciate if you send it to all council members regardless of who requested it or to council staff and they could get it out to everybody so we don't have to revisit numbers. But how many people will that train or how long is that training? We want to make sure there's, I'll tell you why. We want to make sure there's a significant amount of training that's going on.
Your question is how many officers will, what train, the dollar amount?
The, the $100,000 for the anti-bias training, is that for every officer to be trained?
Implicit bias is, will be for every police officer to be trained. Lead will be for patrol officers.
Okay. And the, so the $100,000 is for staff or what is that for, since it's happening in human resources?
It's going to be for patrol officers, like I said, and then for lead. And then the entire police department personnel, police officers, detectives, command staff for implicit bias.
Okay. And does that continue, like that training, or is it kind of like a one and done?
No, it's gonna take place starting in 2020. Well, we have to get the training schedule set first. And we have to incorporate it with all of our other mandatory trainings that we do. So it'll probably take place, it'll probably take a whole year to get the department trained in there. And then we'll have to assess it to see if it's something that's necessary every year or because we have several other trainings that's very similar to implicit bias that we may interchange every other year and then bring it back. We'll probably make sure that the new recruits get this training while they're in the academy.
Good. My last question is about behavioral health unit. We talked about the fact that they are right now during the day. And it was said that, you know, basically there are problems on the weekends and at night. And right now, I know we're calling crisis services. So my concern is, or my thought is, how we have the behavioral health unit because crisis services is set up a little differently. What it would cost us, and I know you won't have this answer right now, I'm okay with somebody sending it to us, to have at least the weekends or high times when you know that there are calls, weekends, holidays, for the behavioral health unit to be active?
Council President, we looked at some costs about fully staffing on a 24/7 operation. If we put six officers per shift, days, afternoons, and the midnight shift, and that would put six officers on days would be broken up, two on each side. So three per shift like we have it now and with supervisors. You're looking at a cost of roughly four and a half million dollars a year. That includes what we're already staffing right now. You're looking at manpower costs and then an RT cost. We'd have to have a report technician to handle the paperwork. And then we'd have to have some cars to, you know, for them to use on their 24/7 basis. So you're looking at, on the low side, about four and a half million dollars. That's 24 officers, six lieutenants, an RT, and then some cars.
And that would be for full-time, right? And thank you for looking that up. That would be for full-time, correct?
Yeah, that's full-time 24/7.
So is there, can, does the data show high times when, when these services are needed? Because 4.5, finding 4.5 at this point may be a little difficult to understand. But is there data that shows on the weekend or on Friday night, we get more calls and Sunday, we don't get any?
So I don't have the data on what higher-low times might be, but I think one thing to look at is when a, when a mental health emergency call comes in, it comes in and unfortunately, those don't know a time. We've seen those at all hours of the day and nights. I think you tend to see a higher volume of those during the daytime, the daylight hours. And that was one of the reasons we look to staff this unit the way it is right now. That came through an MOA with the union, staffing it on a schedule that they are working, which is not a normal patrol schedule. So any changes to their staffing and their hours would have to be negotiated with the union, which we would go through with them. But giving you this cost breakdown is what it would cost to, to staff them. But anything else would, would be negotiated. Like I said, we can look more into peak times, but when a mental health emergency happens, it, you know, it happens at any time. We've seen them all around the clock.
Yeah, and I think everybody would know that. You can't, you can't schedule, we can't schedule when they will. But I think data is so important. If we can't get the 4.5 million, I mean, if I had, if I had it my way, we'd find the 4.5 million and we would always have a mental health team on board. But the same thing in scheduling anything else, scheduling a hospital, anything else, it is, you know, they, they schedule by their, their peak times. And so I would want somebody before we decide on this budget to be able to look at the peak times so that at least we are scheduling. And if the peak times do happen to be in the daytime, Monday through Friday, and you can show us that, then that's fine. But if we see that we are getting more, are the calls, how, how would you be able to find that data? So that we asking for the same thing?
We'd look up in the CAD our mental health calls and we'll have Captain Byer pull that material and get it back out. But we just pull the mental health calls right out of the CAD. So it's not a hard pull.
Thank you so much. So if you get us that, because even if it is, and you have to go and negotiate with the union, I just think it's important to have people on during the high-volume times. So if we could get that before we decide this budget, it would be greatly appreciated.
Sure, yeah. We think it's a great program, so.
Thank you. Any other council members? Councilmember Wyatt?
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioner, there's a million-dollar reimbursement, grant reimbursement for police. What is that for? Or Commissioner Estrich?
They have a number of grants that come in through the police department. They have a give grant, a task force, our JAG grant. We have some, for the mental health grant is in there also. We have a theft and fraud grant, a DEA grant, Stone Garden for overtime grant, federal agencies. So they have quite a number of grants that the police department receives.
Okay.
That's multiple ones in there.
The dollars do they get back from, from confiscation, drug busting, things like that? Is there a number in the budget for that anywhere?
No, that is listed in a trust and agency account. And the police could speak to that. That's an, it's an offline account.
Offline. Why is it offline?
Because they can only use the phones. So that was come to you when they deposit the money. You get a report, please still have to correct me, a record, I believe, of deposits. And then they have strict guidelines on what they can spend that money on.
Can we get a report with those dollars were from the last two years?
Certainly. Yeah, we can get a report. We can get a report for that, yes.
Okay. So if you can email that to us, I'd appreciate it. Next question is regarding investigations. You have 102 from the work numbers, essentially 102 detectives. We had 66 murders. Is that thus 2021, thus far, 66 homicides?
This year, we have not had 66. No, we're at, I believe the number's at 30 this year.
Okay, so it says on, on page 175, Department of Police, Division of Investigations, it says number of homicides, actual 2020, 21, it says 66, on page 175.
Is that a difference between the fiscal year and the calendar year?
Yeah, we count our homicides by calendar year, so I'd have to look at this number going from the fiscal year.
Ah, okay, okay. Because I guess my question is, I see that you have 102 detectives. And I know that there's been conversation about some changes in, in the, how the detectives come in and the hours. And I think that, you know, from, seeing looking at the numbers, the clearance for last year to this year is a little bit different. Are there any other things that we're trying to do to increase that number? Because I can tell you, I've heard from a lot of people regarding the investigations. And, you know, there's a number of people who I know personally, some of them have went to our church, that are just concerned about how things are investigated because they still dealing with the passing of their loved one. And I know that here we have 102 detectives and I'm sure they have a lot of other duties. But how can we kind of focus and address that issue? Because it's real.
Councilmember, we do have 102 detectives, but there are not 102 detectives in homicide. We have about 20 detectives assigned to homicide. And most of these cases that coming in homicide right, right now are gang-related. And when you have a homicide and you have 200 people out there that witness a person getting shot, and then when the homicide detective come out there and investigate and asks if there's any witnesses, you don't have one witness that will come forward. So usually, so that puts us back to, sets us back a little bit. So we have to work much harder and it takes more time to solve these cases. I understand what you're saying and quite every council member in this city have the same problem that, you know, where people are being shot and killed. And it's, and it's beginning to be a major problem for the Buffalo Police Department. And to, and these homicides, people keep harping on solvability. We're not solving homicides because no one is coming forward to tell us what's going on when they sitting there looking at these homicides happen. I'm just as upset as you and the next person is. So this is the reason why a lot of, you look at these homicides and you may see a lot of these homicides are not solved. We, I'll be honest with you, the homicide detectives have a clue of a person of interest who done this homicide, but, you know, they won't come forward. It can be a person, brother that got shot and he was there looking at it and he won't come forward and tell the homicide detectives who done it. So this is what we're facing.
And Commissioner, believe me, I understand. I've had conversations with folks in the community about that very issue. I mean, a whole no-snitching thing, I mean, that's real. And I understand that folks are concerned about retaliation. But when there's no accountability, that's how it just breeds even more mayhem. Are the cameras, the cameras that we have, are those cameras helpful?
The camera has been very helpful, but some of these guys now are getting, now that we have the mask with the COVID and stuff, they're covering their face and they having hoodies on. And we are catching the scene where it's happening that, but once again, people know who done it, but no one is saying nothing. So we have to, you know, work on the scientific part of it, trying to get DNA or if they drop something out there and try to, you know, cover DNA. But trust me, trust me when I tell you this, we're working every day hard at trying to solve these homicides. They are working hard at it. But we can use, we can use all the help we can from people who out there witnesses these things and come forward to help us.
Can I chime in with something here? Councilmember Wyatt, just to give you an idea also to further this point. Recently, we had an individual who was on parole that was shot. He survived that shooting. He told our detective flat out, "I'm not telling you anything and I'm going to go take care of this myself and I'm going to kill the guy." We immediately got on the phone with our violence interrupters and with our C District officers who are going out on a give grant detail. We immediately set up a notification for this individual with the Stop the Violence Coalition. We were not successful in finding him. We spoke with his mother and we spoke with another relative, went to two or three different locations. And in order to head off this retaliation, and that's the biggest problem, is somebody gets shot and it turns into multiple retaliations. This individual is also on parole. His parole officer was immediately notified. And this morning, that individual was ordered to, to come into parole to put an ankle monitoring. So hopefully, we stop the retaliation. So we are trying our best to use a lot of community involvement in preventing not only the shootings, but the retaliations. And it's something that we're really going to put a lot more effort into this year. You know, the enforcement part is tough, but we need that community involvement, like the Commissioner said. So we're really trying to ramp up more community involvement in these notifications and get out to stop the retaliatory shootings. But that's what our detectives are dealing with. I'm not talking to you, I'm going to go deal with this myself. And it's very tough to overcome.
Yeah. And Commissioner, I know that you all have been questioning the tip line. Has that increased the number, the amount of information you're getting back? Or did it, because I'm sure initially it may have peaked, but then is that kind of died?
The tip line is, yes, it's been tips coming in for different crimes that's happening in the city. But a lot of times, the tips come in to give you names or give you information on someone who may have seen something. And then when you go to question them or talk with them about it, sometimes you run into the dead end, to the dead end wall.
Last question. The cameras that we currently have, are those cameras, do they, can they zoom in, those type of features? Or is it basically, because I know that they were talking about how it rotates and it depends on that rotation of the, the recording that information is either gathered or may have been missed?
So the cameras are set on a pattern to, you know, get the most use out of them when they're not being manually overridden. So if there's, you know, staff in the camera room, they're monitoring, you know, the many cameras that we have and they'll zoom in on things and they'll, you know, they can manipulate them to zoom in. Some of our cameras are older. We are replacing some of them with high-definition cameras. It would help that zoom capability even better. But when they're not being manually overridden, they're, they're on a pattern.
So, so those cameras, even though, let's say there's a crime that takes place in a certain area, unless someone is seeing that for themselves, they won't have the ability to zoom in unless they're doing it manually?
But only the camera operator has the ability in the camera room to zoom that camera in and to override it.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you again so much for the explanation. And I'm, you know, I'm hopeful that, again, these conversations, since we're live on Facebook, people will see that, you know, it really isn't, that's not on the police, it really is on the community to give that information when in regard, these homicides. So again, thank you so much. Yes.
Yeah, the other message I would get out on cameras, there are a lot, a lot, a lot of cameras that are privately owned, whether they're doorbell cameras, DVR systems. And one of the issues we also have is, oh, my camera wasn't hooked up or, you know, I have other technical issues with it. Would please ask people that are watching this for this report to go out to check on your camera system. And when a crime occurs in your area, please check your cameras, save that video, sign up for the SafeCam project. We are constantly pushing, pushing to try to recover video. And it's very frustrating when we find out, oh, the video is corrupted, it's not hooked up, it doesn't work, you know, something like that. So we really, really rely on that video. It's a very important component to solving these crimes.
I know we have an E District Police meeting coming up on Wednesday. Myself and Councilmember Bowman regularly attend. And we just, we've been trying to get the word out to a lot of the businesses about the SafeCam program. And so we want to continue the effort that the SafeCam program could be hugely helpful in solving a lot of these crimes. So again, if you can just put that information out real quick about the SafeCam program, how to sign up.
You can go to the City of Buffalo website, the Buffalo Police website. You can Google Buffalo SafeCam. It's a very quick and simple registration process. You're, we do not have the ability to look into your cameras. We cannot gain access over your cameras. All it tells us is that you have a camera, how many cameras you have, how long your retention time is, and the best contact information, email and phone numbers. All that does is allow us to see who has cameras on a grid map throughout the city. We can look where a crime occurred or, you know, the potential route to or from that crime. We can reach out, send an email, a phone call. Please check your video, preserve it. Let us know if you have something and then we'll come and get it or you can email it to us or we'll facilitate getting that. But there are a lot of cameras and we've done a significant push. Even in the last couple of months, we've gotten probably 250-plus registrations with SafeCam this year alone. We're pushing hard, but that's a drop in the bucket to how many cameras are actually out in the city.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Councilmembers, any other questions for the budget? I want you, we got to get to this budget. Councilmember Scanlon?
Thank you, Council President. Just a, Commissioner Deputy Commissioner, just a follow-up on some of the questioning that Council President Priggin had about training. After officers come out of the academy, there is training that they are required to take every year, every other year so often, correct?
Correct. Every officer is required to under-
Every officer is required to undergo 21 hours of mandatory training. And that's by, standard set by the accreditation.
And that was going to be my follow up. In order to be accredited, they have to undertake this training. Can you get, obviously, there's funding associated with this training or overtime. It's got to be paid for somehow. So can you get us a list of what training? I mean, obviously, this is quite an undertaking. We're talking about 700, 800 people. Can you get us a list of the training that the officers have to take and how often they have to take it?
Yeah, excuse me, yes. Every officer on an annual basis has to go, excuse me, has to take firearms training. And they have to also take bloodborne pathogens and infectious disease training. They also have to take the defensive tactics refresher course. And that's also including use of force and legal updates. Those are the mandatory trainings that every officer has to undergo. And then an additional 12 hours or so to make up the 21 hours. And that, that will vary, that's where we have a little bit of discretion, what trainings we can send them to. And I've been requiring that officers will take implicit bias or procedural justice. And as you know, we have some grant programs that we're going to have to include in that training that comes for the 21 hours. For example, we just started this de-escalation training, which is the ICAT training by PERF. I'm sure Deputy Gormaglia was instrumental in bringing that to the department. And that is huge. Every officer receives 10 hours of de-escalation training. That's in addition to the 201 officers that has received 32 hours of crisis intervention training. All of this training is in addition to the 21 hours. The 21 is mandatory. And then once we've completed mandatory, we move into what are the other training areas that we think is very relevant based on what's happening in the community.
Did you say that that de-escalation training was through PERF?
Through PERF, yes.
Okay.
So what we've been doing is bringing in officers on our full platoon days. And we can get a lot of officers citywide trained during the day because it's 10 hours. And in order to get training done in the afternoon on our manpower four and manpower five, which is afternoons and overnight, we have to split that 10 hour training up into two nights. So we have to do our due diligence and see what districts have officers that are working two consecutive days so that we can bring them in two days in a row for five hours from 8:30 at night to 1:30 in the morning, two days in a row in order to get to 10 hours of de-escalation training done. So far, we have about 220 officers that we've trained in just a matter of a few short months. We brought three PERF instructors in to train myself, Deputy Gormaglia, and 25 other officers. And then we've trained about 193 patrol officers in this de-escalation training. And it's been very well received.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Nowakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have one quick question. I see that for clothing and uniforms, I see about a $70,000 reduction in that line from last year's actuals. You know, how did you guys come to that conclusion to reduce it $70,000? And is it also a part of a police officer's contract to get a certain allotment of uniforms? Just wanted to gain some clarity.
Our training in uniform number has been reduced, well, basically, what's wrong? 200, because it's, okay. All right, to 539,118. We didn't put an academy class in in January. That also counts for part of the reason why the number was reduced.
The budget actually increased.
It did for training?
Yeah, for clothing and uniforms. So I'm not quite sure what line you're looking at.
Councilmember Nowakowski, can you, can you align?
Oh, you're right, you're right, because of the year to date in the revised budget. I just see for the recommended this year on page 178, down from, under laboratory supplies, I see clothing and uniforms. I see last year's actual amount was 671, but then I see for the recommended budget this year, 601.
Correct. And that actual amount was actually from two years ago. And so our budget did, the budget for this increased about $60,000 from last year's budget.
Okay.
Okay.
Also, Councilmember?
Thank you, yes. And it was because you said that there was an extra class to be prepared for.
I'm sorry. I wasn't aware that, I just have to see this number. I know that the numbers speak for themselves, but I know what we've done in the police department to try to decrease our numbers, we did not put a class in in January. So we didn't have those officers that we had to hire and provide them with uniforms. And we've also changed the way we issue uniforms in the Buffalo Police Department. We used to give three long sleeve shirts, three short sleeve shirts and pants to officers on a yearly basis. Now what we do is the officers have to bring in worn and damaged uniforms in order to receive a new uniform. So that decreased. We have had a significant savings in our uniform allowance just because we're not spending as much money. So we've taken some measures to try to reduce the spending that way.
Thank you very much, Deputy Commissioner.
Thank you. Councilmembers, anything else on the budget? All right, speaking of other hands up, thank you very much. And we'll look forward to that information being sent to Chief of Staff to be distributed to all councilmembers. Thank you.
Councilmember Pridgen, before we go, are we done? We're done, okay.
You sure?
Well, I do want to say this to you because I just received some information from Administration and Finance while we were here regarding training. I mentioned that there was $100,000 that was allocated to HR. And right now, that amount has increased or has been, the actual dollar amount is $145,000. $25,000 is allocated for lead, $20,000 is for the bias, and $100,000 is for community planning process. That's going to be administered through the Commission on Citizens Rights and Community Relations. They're going to do surveys with the community to determine what types of trainings are needed with the Buffalo Police Department. I just wanted to make sure you had the most up to date information on that.
I appreciate that. Can you, can somebody, because I couldn't write fast enough, can somebody send us that in a meeting so that we can have that conversation in case the council feels some of those dollars need to be? And we'll obviously have that conversation in cooperation with you all and the administration. But I think the big push from majority of the council, if not all of them in council, is to ensure that the dollars are there for training of our police department because it is very difficult to blame somebody for something that they have not been trained on. So we just, that's a very, very important part. So if you get us that, and thank you for updating us on that, Deputy Commissioner.
Sure, thank you.
All right, speaking of other hands, thank you, Commissioner Eschardt, who's coming before us next? Are we back in order now?
Department of Public Works is next, Councilmember.
All right, good. Are they coming into that room?
Yes, they are.
All right, we will pause for a few seconds to get into Department of Public Works. Good afternoon.
Good. Yep.
Or?
Technically, morning. It probably feels like afternoon by, for you.
It feels like night, but. I mean, Commissioner, you've already made your statements. Councilmembers, do you have any budget related questions for this department? Okay, I'm not going to drag it out because obviously that means that the councilmembers feel that they have heard what they have needed to hear. Commissioner, anything that you were to bring before this body that was requested?
Yes, there were a couple items that were sent to us and I'm going to go through that. The first question, locations throughout the city that will get new road striping. The Ledger Fair staff sent to the Chief of Staff, the proposed list of 35 schools where we're proposing to do crosswalks and the school, the word "school" actually written on the pavement. Hopefully, that's been distributed around. If not, it'll be coming shortly. And then in addition to that, our proposal is to do Niagara Square and the crosswalks in Niagara Square. I think that's a very important, high visibility site for all of us. And one mile of roadway in each council medic district. And we'll finalize that list as we get closer to doing that. And I'll be happy to discuss that further with councilmembers at that time.
You said you sent the, to our Chief of Staff, because I don't, we haven't received it yet.
Okay, I'll check with the Ledger Fair staff to make sure that that gets to you. And if you'd like, I can proceed with the rest of the items and we can circle back on that once you've gotten the list and have had a chance to look at it.
Yeah, we'll let you go through everything and then come back.
Okay. The next item from Councilmember Bowman, what is the process for creating and installing street signs? What could be done to streamline the effort? The process is relatively simple. You know, we have a sign shop at 1120 Seneca Street that makes signs. We have crews that go out and install them. One of the things that does slow up is, you know, just to give a pretty common example, stop sign gets knocked down, the whole pole is taken out in a motor vehicle crash. And we put up a temporary stop sign in the short term. We're required to call the UFPO system before we go and put in a new pole so that we don't drive that new pole through a gas line or the street lighting system or some other underground utility. That can take three to five days in order to turn that whole process around from the amount of time that utilities are given to mark out their underground lines. An important point that I want to add though is we are working with MIS to procure new work order software, not just for traffic signs, but for multiple types of work that the Department of Public Works does. In my observation, I think where we're seeing things get missed is there's text messages going, there's emails, there's the lag in system through 311, and the crew's kind of using all of those. We need to get all of that input into one work order system that actually tracks the work getting done. And then in a perfect world, the 311 complaint would come in, it would automatically create a work order, the crew would go work off the work order, do the work, close the work order in the system that would automatically close the lag in system. So we're minimizing the amount of times that anyone has to go into any specific software system. I'm really looking forward to that. I think that'll be an improvement definitely for the traffic group as well as other departments who are at various stages of having their work orders be anywhere from paper to. There are some groups that have fully automated systems. The forestry department is one that's very good. That's why I want to bring all of our work into that type of platform. There's, go ahead, Councilmember.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilman Bowman.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Commissioner Finn, for the detailed response. The reason I bring it up, and I know signage is made at 1120 Seneca, and I just noticed over, you know, the past potentially year, some of the signage requests were, you know, either delayed or not getting done. And typically, I'll drive through my district, you know, once a week and call in different street signs or there's different sign orders that have been put in. But I just wanted to make sure while we were in the budget process that, you know, we had adequate funds to be able to address, you know, signage concerns in the district. But, you know, I have noticed the delay. I'm hopeful that, you know, the process you described with MIS will, you know, help us in the future. But just, I kind of wanted to make sure that it was on our radar and moving forward. So thank you very much.
Commissioner, you have other things, items?
Yes. What I'll do is, as I go through, is I'll go to each item, pause if there's questions. If not, then I'll keep going to respect your time. The next item from Councilmember Wyatt, provided detailed plan for deployment of speed humps. I've briefed each of the councilmembers on the neighborhood slow streets program that we've been discussing for some time and the implementation on that. I'd be happy to discuss more if there's questions on that item. If not, I'll continue to go.
Questions, and again, I want to point you related to the budget. Councilmember Wyatt?
Commissioner, I put forth a resolution that's going to come before council on Tuesday regarding the implementation of the plan regarding the speed humps and speed readers where the cameras are currently. So that by September, once we remove the cameras, those items are in place. Are we going to be able to do that, given if, I'm not trying to tell you what to do, but once this thing is resolved, will you be able to do that in the short term before September 1?
So I've not had a chance to look at that resolution in detail. What I can say, I'll say off the top of my head without an extensive amount of research, is the traffic calming that was mentioned in the resolution and previous versions of the ordinance amendment that was put out there. It would certainly take, I think, longer than September 1st to do a build out for 20 schools. Another important point that I want to make is not all of what I believe was described would be appropriate for the roadways where the cameras are, and specifically, speed humps. Speed humps are designed for 15 to 20 mile an hour traffic. And I don't think it's appropriate or in the city's best interest to have those on streets like Main Street or, you know, other major thoroughfares where the cameras primarily are.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Commissioner, you explained that to us that we couldn't put it on primary streets. So I guess my conversation or the resolution will speak to, you know, again, the areas in which the speed humps can be put, like on Olmsted, maybe a Suffolk, in those areas. And basically, hopefully, through this budget process, we'll have some dollars to implement those things because that's really important. I think you said the administration and safe streets is critically important through, so if these cameras come down, we want to make certain that, again, we have the safety of our children at heart and those speed humps will be a critical part. And I think on the main streets, we're talking about speed readers and still having the beacons. So that's what the plan was for the main streets, like Main Street and Delaware and those things.
Yep, and to clarify, Suffolk could be another one that would not be appropriate for speed humps. They're really only appropriate on residential streets or park roads, which is where we did the pilot program in a couple parks across the city to try them out. The other infrastructure that you mentioned, the speed readout signs, the beacons are up at the school. So I don't think that would necessarily be an addition. But the speed readout signs, that would be another expense that would have to be discussed about. I mean, we're looking at, if you're talking about really traffic calming. traffic calming to the level of, of what we've done in other, in other projects that I think would, would be similar. And the one that comes to my mind right now is Fillmore Avenue. Fillmore Avenue had bump outs put in and another, a bunch of other traffic calming infrastructure, and it worked. It reduced the, the crashes, slowed down the, the speed, but that was a two-point-two million dollar project a number of years ago. So, obviously costs have gone up. So, that's, that's something that's going to have to be considered.
So, for the, the readers, what would, what would the cost be for the readers? Because those are, the readers that we're talking about would be solar-driven readers, right? That's what we put in a resolution anyway.
Yep. So, speed reader, the, I believe what you're, what you're describing is the, the speed readouts that have, that actually, you know, display your speed as you're, as you're driving by, yeah. So, for something like that, I think we're talking about twenty thousand dollars apiece for the actual speed readout. And then, then you have to consider a support to, for it to go on. Obviously, we have a lot of streetlights, but I think for something like that, and even consider a streetlight like Main Street when there's two lanes, I'm not sure exactly how that would, how that would work. So, you may have to look at a cantilevered system to actually display that properly. That would be, that would add money to this, certainly.
You said twenty thousand for a speed reader?
Yeah, including the installation. And, you know, we've, we've purchased these before on a pilot basis and, you know, installed them with city crews. But this would be something that would be certainly beyond what we could do with our own staff. We'd look to hire this, this out as a, of a full capital improvement project.
Okay. And then the, the speed humps, we were talking about again, the cost of those?
Yeah, that was another question going down. But as long as you're here, a speed hump, a single speed hump, including the advanced warning sign that needs to be put in with it, is thirty-four hundred dollars. It's very important though to understand that it is nearly impossible to have a situation where you could only put in one speed hump. And that was a conversation that we had about, you know, they need to be designed in such a way that, you know, we're not putting them in on, on a block. And I'll, I'll use an example, in University District, that comes out right to the top of my head, you know, you put them on LaSalle, it, you know, the traffic will just move over to Minnesota. It's got to be thought out in a, in a broad range. So, that can, that creates a situation where, you know, it certainly is more than just thirty-four hundred dollars. But that's, that's the answer to the question.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Sorry. Thank you. Any other questions, council members? I need to. I did have one. Let me just look real quick. We've talked for four years about the square, probably five, and the vehicles that are parking in the square. And every year I get promised that we will put something up so that vehicles cannot park in the square that are unauthorized. I don't see anything out there right now, but I still see cars, news trucks, after we've given them a place. I, what's the plan on, on our square that we put quarter of a million dollars in?
Yeah, the, the plan for Niagara Square and McKinley Monument is with the repairs that need to be made. After last year, there was a very significant incident on Thanksgiving. We are going to include in that the analysis of potential measures that can be put in place to prevent vehicles from getting up on there. We need to, there's, there's two things and two reasons why I want to have that as part of that process. One, that process will include the Arts Commission and the consideration for the historic nature of the, of Niagara Square. And two is, we need to design a way that it can be flexible because I personally think it's still appropriate, especially the volunteers who do the work of maintaining Niagara Square. I would like to be able to have a way that they can still have access for, for the work that they do for us for, for free. So, with, that's, that's our plan.
And I respect that. And here's my issue. And I agree, and I've always said the workers should at least be able to pull into the driveway. I don't think that there's, you know, I know we have the food trucks that are authorized in the summer, have no problem with that. But what I am witnessing, and I'll say it again, is I'm witnessing police parked there, I'm witnessing the news parked there, I'm witnessing oil coming off of cars. This should not be in an area that doesn't have a lot of outdoor gathering space that is used for cars. I'm only one council member commissioner, but I've been promised this now for five years. I will not vote on this portion. This has to be solved, this budget, even if it's temporary. Because what I was told, we'll put some planners there and then we'll move them when a food truck or whatever. And I have not seen one move in that square. The accident should not hold us back. Matter of fact, it should probably propel us even more, although that was an accident that in no way would anything there have changed the circumstance of that accident. I can't with great conscience wait another year when I'm watching something that we put in a lot of money and people just not respecting the fact that that is a monument. So, I would ask that you would find some type of, or not, but I, I don't want to go another year asking for the same thing and hearing we're going to study it. So, whether that, when, when we wanted ballots up in front of City Hall, they showed up quicker in a hurry. I think there's probably enough extra ones of those because to make what, what to me looks like a bowling alley, that moving some of those or grabbing some from somewhere else. But to block off, we block off Chippewa overnight. I can't believe we can't find a way to attractively block off the square so that people are not using it as a free parking lot. So, that's my request. I'm one council member, but I think that I could find five others who would agree with that.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate your team coming over and everything that you do. Council members, before we go into the next, I have a question because there were several departments that there were no questions for, or that I believe questions were answered. And I don't want to bring them all the way over or bring them out of their offices if we don't have any questions for them. So, I'm going to give a list. And if you do have a question for them that you need answered, then, then they will also be included. HR, I don't believe I heard any follow-up questions. Is there any objection from not bringing HR on? Are there any questions, I should say, that anybody has for HR? Councilmember Rivera? I'm sorry, you're on mute.
You don't have to bring them in. This is something we can do offline. The police department, or the fire department had mentioned that part of the delay in the police training or exams was because HR, they're involved in.
We can bring them in.
I mean, I don't want to, I mean, that's just something that, that we can ask them. We don't have to do that online. We can do that offline. I don't mind asking them for, because they're going to be coming before us for other things. I just want to make sure that we move these promotional exams forward, unless you want to bring them in. But.
So, what we can do, if, if no one objects, we can have chief of staff ask HR to respond to that in writing and share that with the public. So, we'll make that a part of the public record. The other was community services. Was there any questions for community services? The other was permits and inspections. Because we asked a lot of questions, I just don't want to take them off working if we have nothing. The other was parking. Okay. And the last one that I don't believe there was a question for was law. All right. So, if, and I don't want to take away anybody's right to ask a question. If there's a question later, and it comes up out of other conversations, we'll call them as, and as needed. And we will even, instead of trying to get them to the Zoom, get them on the phone, on the Zoom or whatever. So, because other things may come up, I don't want to say, well, we definitely not going to hear from them if they do come up. So, Commissioner Estridge, the list is HR will be receiving a request to respond. I would ask if they, so that we don't have to bring them in today, that they would respond within twenty-four hours. Community services, permits and inspections, parking and law will not have to appear before today. There may be questions as we're going through the process where we will bring them back. But for today's meeting, those departments will not be needed. So, I know this throws your schedule around because we have, then the, that's left, is the mayor's office, MIS. Do we have questions for MIS? I think we want to do an executive session with them. I already talked to the mayor and he was okay with that. Assessment and taxation. We had questions for assessment and taxation, council members? It was, yeah, because there was on the interim. So, we do want to bring them. Let me go back. MIS, was, were there any questions for MIS? None? Oh, I'm sorry, the executive session. I just said it. Assessment and taxation. Any questions?
Councilmember Noakowski, do you want to? Because we did have a separate meeting, but it's up to you.
Yeah, I did, I did have a quick question.
We can bring them in. That's fine. Audit and control. Anything for audit and control? All right. Then we will also, if there were questions for the common council? Okay. So, what it looks as if we have. Yes, I'm sorry, council.
Yeah, I have some questions for our internal budget, but I don't think it's anything we need to bring Tiana in for. It's, I think it's more of a conversation for yourself and councilmember Rivera to start, and then we can send it out to the other council members. You and I started talking about it via text last week, but it's something we can follow up with the council members.
Very good with that. So, if you want, council members, we could break for lunch or we could hear the last one, two, three departments. Do you want to just go right through and get this done so we are finished? All right. So, I don't know, Commissioner Estridge, are you ready for the mayor and executive branch? Or Mike Marcy?
I can't speak. Oh, is OSP there? Okay, I can't speak for OSP, but I can answer anything for the mayor's office.
All right. Oh, perfect. Thank you. This, this is perfect. All right. We'll hear from, well, you don't have to speak. You've, you've already spoke. There were several questions. Were you bringing back information that was requested?
So, the, the one piece of information that was requested was regarding the CDBG allocation. We were already working on that, but it's not finalized. Our intent was actually for that to be presented as part of the annual action plan budget, which is in June. So, you are going to get that information. We just didn't have it ready for the budget because it's not part of the city budget. But it was going to be presented to you all for the annual action plan budget. So, you will get that information.
All right. Was there anything else you were bringing to us, sir?
No, that, that was the only question that was presented to us. But of course, we've got the full team here, all the directors and myself. We're here to answer any of your questions.
Council members, any questions concerning the budget for the mayor and executive department? There are no questions. I'm making sure. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, every director, everybody who's, who's with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, council member.
Can I ask this real, real quick? I'm sorry, real quick, since Hope is here and Brendan. Brendan, we have developers that I know we do not sell city land to if they have violations on their properties. That's correct, right?
That is correct.
And, but they can pull permits, of course, to fix their properties. If, if a developer has several companies, but it is the same person who's the head of that development company, so they have several LLCs, and we are aware that they lead those organizations. If they have a violation on one set of properties, do we still give them, can they still buy city-owned land without cleaning up what they have with another company?
No. So, we look, we look to see that of all the companies, how they stand. So, sometimes it gets a little tricky because it's percentage of ownership and things of that nature. But generally, our rule is, you know, it's you, and you have to be in compliance with our, with our charter and code.
Okay. Thanks. That's all I had. Thank you. Appreciate you all.
Good job, Oz.
Great job. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I mean, this is, I don't know, they're ready to go. I'm not sure who I'm talking to then. Mike, can we get MIS or assessment in now?
They're on their way. At least one second.
Okay. So, if we get both of them up, then, oh, this is terrific timing. And like I said, in case anybody's watching, it's not that we haven't asked the questions. We've been asking the questions in our last meeting. We went a little deeper than we normally have. So, many of these questions have been answered by departments. Who do I have in front of me?
Jason Schelf, Commissioner of Assessment and Taxation.
Jason, Commissioner, welcome. Councilmember, questions for the Commissioner? Councilmember Noakowski?
Thank you. This is a, just a quick one. Commissioner Shaw, I just have a quick question. I see that for the, for the payment in lieu of taxes, for the program revenue on page twenty-two, I see that it goes down four-hundred or five-thousand dollars. Is there, is that because certain projects are tapering off?
Correct. Yeah. So, it's, it's a combination of both pilots expiring, but also due to agreements, the amounts also expire. So, you know, there might be less required. But majority of that, you know, reduction in funding is based on pilots falling off.
So, it's fair to say that in, in, you know, coming years, we might, we'll, we'll continue to see that number grow as, as those amounts keep tapering off?
No, I would say it's fair to say that it fluctuates because as some are falling off, some might be negotiated. So, you know, pilots range all throughout, you know, from housing projects to infrastructure projects, whatever it might be. So, it's basically just another way, a payment in lieu of taxes. So, that number could be up or down depending on how many agreements we have.
Perfect. Up or down for agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Council members, any other questions? Councilmember Wyatt?
Thank you. Commissioner, so you just, so are you saying that the different developers who have gotten these tax credits at the end of the term or close to the end of the term, it can be renegotiated?
No, the standard is a fifteen-year pilot agreement. They can apply for an additional fifteen years, which is renegotiated. But those particular pilot agreements last for fifteen-year periods. Some are actually up to thirty, depending on the year it was negotiated and what type of agreement it is. But, you know, it's really just fluctuates depending on where each agreement is in that year. If it falls off, if they renegotiate, or if we get new, new pilot agreements negotiated and implemented.
Have we done a lot of those?
They're sporadic. You know, majority of them that we see are for housing development corporations, you know, where they're building low mod income. We see a lot of those, you know, where they're built mixed-use type of properties. But there's infrastructure fund pilots that, you know, we see piled infrastructure funds. So, majority of them are housing-related. But I wouldn't see, say we see a lot of them, but, you know, we do see some each year.
So, when they end their pilot, what, can you, do you have a program or do you have a report that kind of talks about the number, let's say we have fifty of them, and I'm sure they all have different expiration dates. Can you give us a report or is there such a report that shows us what the impact is to the bottom line as far as now putting one a tax roll and what that, that could impact could be for the city?
I could look at that.
Okay. If you could give us that, because I know, because how many would you say we have? I mean, I'm sure you have hundreds of them, right?
No, I would say less than a hundred. Probably, yeah. Yeah, there's probably ninety, maybe.
Okay. Yeah, because if you, that, that's a really important distinction to know that in the next ten or five or ten or fifteen years. In the next 10 or five or 10 or 15 years, there's a economic impact regarding these pilots and how it can be put back on the. Will we put on the tax uh, base to help us because um, again, we're looking at these revenues. Uh, our revenues are questionable in some cases, um, but if we can see these coming down the pike. I think it'd give us a little bit more um, comfort. To see that, hey, within maybe 10 years or 15 years, we may see a $5 million or $20 billion impact to the bottom line. For once they come back, they come online as far as tax base.
Yeah, a, a lot of the benefit is given to the housing development corporations. Um, you know, because they are providing this type of housing. So. Uh, even after the 15 year expiration, some even have through negotiations that as long as they maintain purpose, as long as they maintain financing. Um, you know, through whatever entity they get it that's qualified. Um, you know, under federal law, then the pilot will also continue and will be renegotiated. So. It really just depends on the type of funding, uh, the type of pilot um, negotiated, the purpose of it. Um, and you know, obviously there's a need for that in the city. So you know, that's why those types of agreements exist and that's why they continue.
Okay. Yeah. So if you could give us that, um, with those projects and their expiration date is for, and the economic impact to the city. Um, that would be fantastic. And um, when you talk about the negotiation of those pilots, who would be doing that? Is that the city or is that the federal government or state?
It's actually uh, depending on uh, where it originates. Uh, so there's ECIDA pilots. Um, you know, that are more development purpose. And then there's uh, city pilots were negotiated by the Office of Strategic Planning. And um, Bureau wing. So. Uh, those pertain more to the housing development and ECIDA pertains more to the development, I would say. But um, yeah, those are negotiating parties. Our involvement is more of approved to content. Um, you know, that uh, the negotiations and, and you know, the agreed upon. Uh, you know, tax schedule and uh, how we collected and you know, the, the fines or the penalties. Are all within real property tax law and then that we will administer that pilot agreement according to the law.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Commissioner.
No problem.
Thank you. Any other questions for the Commissioner? Thank you, Commissioner. And um, as, as, and I didn't tell the other departments, um, you know, if we need you again, we'll arrange it through the administration. Uh, for any further questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, do we have MIS standing by?
Yes, we do.
Perfect. So as MIS is coming in, we'll have general questions. And then um, we will go into an executive session. Um, so that we can. Ask some, ask a question, a specific question. That I don't think should be in the public domain. Because it deals with security. MIS? Ah.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Was there anything that you were to bring back to this committee?
Uh, no, just a couple of questions that were to be uh, addressed in executive session.
Okay. Councilmembers, are there any questions for a public session? Okay. Here. I'm not sure what this is. Are there any questions for public session? All right. Um. Is moved by councilmember Wyatt, I mean, moved by the majority leader, second by councilmember Wyatt, that we go in the executive session. To discuss items pertaining to our security of our systems. Councilmembers, the um, breakout room is in front of you. To the public, we will come back after the, the um, executive session. Uh, to close this committee meeting out. Uh, my views have changed. Not my views have changed, but there we go. Um. We will, we will come. We now coming back at exactly, uh, the council was in executive session uh, to discuss matters of security. Uh, pertaining to our, uh, that were answered by our MIS department. Uh, before we went into executive session, we asked if there were any other questions or any other departments. I've not been informed that there are. Um, and so hearing no other departments for the workshops. Um, I believe that we are ready to go into recess until. Do we have to five o'clock? Yep, we do have to come back at five. Thank you, Mark. Um, it's been moved by councilmember Rivera, second by councilmember Fear Leto. That we would go into recess and return as committee of the whole at five o'clock for our public hearing. Thank you all.